Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the October 24th, 2016 legislative session. I'd like to welcome everybody. Must be something important going to happen tonight. That was a joke. You can laugh. Thank you. Good.
I thought it was great.
Thank you. That scares me. Okay. I would ask you all to please silence any electronic devices that you have. Should an emergency arise during this meeting, please exit the room, make a right and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, make a left and then a right and go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. Should you need any assistance, please ask and someone will provide it for you. At this time, I'd like to call Pastor Chris Martin of the Sun Life Community Church for the invocation. Pastor Martin?
Let's pray. Lord, your word tells us that you give us officials over us to govern and to do the things that are beneficial for us. And so, Lord, I ask, Father, that you will give these councilmen and women, Father, wisdom when it comes to the situations and the circumstances and everything that has to do with our county. I pray that you will speak into their hearts, watch over them as they make decisions, give them the wisdom they need for these decisions. Lord, you've appointed them for this time, and I pray that you will bless them in this time. We give this meeting to you to have your will and your way. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Martin. Please stand now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Mayor, we have a proclamation this evening.
Mr. President and council members, good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm doing well, thank you. So, I have a very brief proclamation this evening, but it's one that is important to, I think, annually recognize. And it really is one that, I think, addresses the service and sacrifice that each of you makes and each and every person that volunteers for or works for the city of Salisbury. So, I'm going to ask, there's a couple of city employees out in the hallway, I'm going to ask them to come inside. Just for a second, you can go right back out. So, whereas the city of Salisbury was incorporated in 1854, and whereas Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites and structures to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore, and whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the city of Salisbury is proud to promote municipal government awareness. And now, therefore, I, Jacob R. Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 2016 as Municipal Government Works Month in our city. And I'm joined by the Maryland Municipal League to promote the awareness and interest of our citizens and the city of Salisbury's local government. If you ever feel like government is unresponsive or far away, you look at our municipal government, you look at our local government, it's right here in our backyard, it's our neighbors helping neighbors, it's our neighbors working for neighbors and helping one another and serving one another. So, this is my salute to and our salute to not only you, councilmen and women, for your service, and everybody at the table, from our city attorney and our city clerk, and our volunteers and board members in the audience, and even deputy mayor from the town of Delmar, but every single one of you who works for the city of Salisbury. So, I'm going to ask city employees if you would stand up for a second. This is our moment to show you our appreciation. And throughout this month, we'll be highlighting the great work of city employees, municipal employees in our fine city. So, thank you for everything you do, from police department to procurement, to the mayor's office, to business development, to human resources, to the city council. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet.
Yes, I'd like to formally recognize Deputy Mayor Bonky Lufman from Delmar. Bonky, stand up so everybody can see you. Welcome.
And if I may, Mr. President, recently of the governor's office.
Yes, congratulations. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Bowden, Mr. Iarton.
Would like to make a motion to strike the words Resolution Number 2687 from the last item on the consent agenda.
So moved. We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Ms. Jackson seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the, or take a vote on the amended agenda. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. I want to entertain a motion to discuss the vacant council position.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Iarton. Okay. I want to take a couple of minutes just to go through the process that we went through in order to get here tonight. As most of you know, we have four weeks once the vacated position becomes apparent and announced, and we are not to the fourth week yet, so we're okay. The following steps were taken during that four-week period. The council advertised the position in the Daily Times, Salisbury Independent, and on the city website. Council received all of the letters and resumes within the allotted time for three candidates. Council interviewed each candidate in closed session on Monday, October 17th, 2016, and anonymously voted by secret ballot on the same day. It was not just a plain ballot. To let everyone know, we actually ranked the three candidates, one, two, or three. And then, we determined by unanimous, I might add, by unanimous agreement that, on the individual. You can read the timeline that we had that's on the website if you have any questions. Anything the council would like to add? Okay. If not, I will ask for a motion to nominate R. Hardy Rudisil to fill the District Five council position.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Bowden. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the chair votes aye. Mr. Rudisil, I ask you to go to the podium, and I would also like at this time to call Mark Bowen, Clerk of the Circuit Court, to swear you in.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is the switch on?
Just.
It's on the front. Yep.
If you will repeat after me, please. Aye, and state your name.
Aye, R. Hardy Rudisil.
Do swear or affirm.
Do swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution of all thereof.
And support the Constitution and all thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
For the best of my skill and judgment.
For the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently, faithfully.
Diligently.
And faithful without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Salisbury City Councilmember.
Salisbury City Councilmember.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
How's it feel?
All right. We'll see.
Okay.
Good answer. Good answer.
Could I say something?
Certainly.
Kind of overwhelmed, because actually, this is the first time we've ever had an African-American male on the council. And to have. So, this is history in the making, and to have two African-Americans on the council is the first I'm ever. So.
Oh, we should do that again. I want to.
Okay. We have other business we have to do, and then we can relax. We are now at that point where we need to elect a new vice president of the council. I'd like to read the rules aloud to elect the new vice president. One, any council member may be nominated for vice president, except me. Yes, I understand that. A council member may nominate himself or herself, no second is needed. After the nominations are received, nominations will be closed. The vote will be called in the order of nomination, and when voting, the first to receive three votes will be elected council vice president. Council members can only vote once. Oh, that's interesting. And can vote for themselves. Okay. Is that clear? We all set? All right, I'll now entertain a motion to accept these rules.
So moved.
Mr. Iarton, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye. Okay, I will now accept nominations for vice president.
I nominate Mayor Bowden.
Mr. Council President, in seconding this motion, let me say this. It is an incredible thing to have Mr. Rudisil with us this evening and now to second the nomination of Mr. Bowden for vice president of the city council. As a historian of our city and the thousands of hours I do reading about it, the idea that our city council vice president will come from Decatur Avenue in the most underrepresented area in the city, you have to go back 40 years to find anyone who came anywhere close to living in that neighborhood. And I find it to be an incredible evening for us as a city and as a people to be able to welcome Councilman Rudisil and to be able to second the nomination of Mayor Bowden for city council vice president.
I'll accept a motion to.
He stays at this side of the table, though. He makes me laugh.
Whoa, I haven't lost this yet.
Okay.
We're going to handle that next. Okay. I'd like to have a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
All right. In that case, all those in favor of Mr. Bowden for council vice president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mr. Bowden. Now, relative to the seating, I'm going to, I am going to change.
I was going to make a motion.
I will explain. No, 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 don't do that, please. My good ear is this ear, okay?
It's true.
Everybody knows that this is my good ear, this is my bad ear. So, for the vice president, I would prefer that the vice president sit on my left, so that should I do something incorrect and he whispers, I can hear what he's telling me I did wrong. So, if you two would switch, that would be great. I appreciate that.
Keep him straight down there.
I'll do my best.
Mr. President? Yes.
We'll have to have breakfast.
Who will kick? Councilmember Iarton to the table. Yes, you have certain obligations, which we will talk about later.
Here, take your, this bag.
You got a thing yet? You have it? Yes. There you go.
Thank you.
I didn't like the idea of that.
Also, well, I apologize, Ms. Jackson. But also, when I was, when my, our family gets to dinner, no one ever sat on the left. You know why? This was very good, this wasn't so good.
Mr. Council President, if I would, could we also recognize Ms. Mary Ashanti, the president of the local branch of the NAACP who is with us, and Marilyn Burkle, longtime news director for WBOC and now what looks to be a mentor for Mr. Rudisil down at UMES. So, welcome to both of them.
We have a lot of visitors tonight and on a very great evening, I must say. So, okay, where are we? Here we go. Let's go back. Okay. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Iarton, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Ms. Nichols.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the consent agenda this evening, we have the September 19th, 2016 work session minutes, September 26th, 2016 regular meeting minutes, October 3rd, 2016 work session minutes, Resolution Number 2683 declaring that Palorama LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for their property located at 601 East Main Street in Salisbury, Maryland. Resolution Number 2684 declaring that A&amp;M Family Group LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for their property located at 1135 South Salisbury Boulevard in Salisbury, Maryland. And Resolution Number 2685 declaring that Farmers &amp; Planners Company is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for their property located at 210 Mill Street in Salisbury, Maryland. Resolution Number 2686 to change the employee handbook sections 0102, equal employment opportunity, 0301, wages and hours, 0509, military leave for training and weekend drill obligations, and 0610, sexual harassment. And we have a request to approve the manufacturing exemption for Delmarva Printing and Design Inc. for their equipment purchased in 2015. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
I now call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much. I now entertain a motion for the award of bids.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bowden, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Miller, how are you? Mrs. Jennifer Miller.
Oh, thank you. I thought she was bringing something to us.
Thank you.
Now, you know that this poor man is sitting here going, what is going on right now? We'll hang with us, we'll be all right.
Yeah, he's soon to find out.
All right, good evening, council.
Good evening, Mrs. Miller.
We have four items on the award of bid this evening. The first is for award of bid for Contract 109-17, it's the Heile, excuse me, Heile rear loader. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works to purchase a Heile rear loader through Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems utilizing a contract secured by the National Joint Powers Alliance, or NJPA, Contract Number 112014-THC. Per Section SC163, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions of the Salisbury City Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the city of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the city of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities such as NJPA. The National Joint Powers Alliance is a public agency serving as a municipal contracting agency for government and education agencies under the legislative authority established and granted by Minnesota Statute 123A-21. All NJPA contracts have been competitively solicited nationally, reviewed, and evaluated by committee, and recommended to the NJPA Board of Directors for award in accordance with Minnesota Public Purchasing and Contracting Rules, Guidelines, and Regulations applicable to NJPA. Each solicitation is issued on behalf of NJPA and current NJPA members nationwide. The contracts awarded by the NJPA are then made available to local governments nationwide through the NJPA Cooperative Purchasing Program, of which the city of Salisbury is a longstanding member. The Procurement Division has confirmed with the NJPA the validity of the contract, including the terms, pricing, and expiration date, and the prices quoted by Mid-Atlantic are in accordance with the NJPA contract prices. Since Heile does not sell direct, purchases are made through its dealer network, such as Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems. There are sufficient funds in the noted account, which is waste collection vehicles. The Procurement Department requests council's approval to award Contract 109-17 to Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems in the amount of $180,241.28.
Questions?
Okay. The second award this evening is for Contract 108-17, this is multi-space pay-by-plate parking meters. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department Parking Division wishes to purchase 13 multi-space pay-by-plate parking meters, or stations, for several locations within the downtown Salisbury area. These meters were demonstrated to the city council, the executive office, and the CCDC in April of 2016, and it is proposed that these pay stations will be placed on East Main Street upon completion of the Main Street master plan, and at select other locations within the downtown area. Pay-by-plate pay stations have many advantages over current single-space meters. They accept credit cards and debit cards. The models that we're proposing have LCD screens for city use or business advertising. These pay stations have the ability to accept business-sponsored validation codes. It provides for clean and unobstructed streetscapes. Pay stations such as these integrate with mobile parking apps, allowing customers to prepay for parking and extended time at a meter. They integrate with mobile enforcement platforms. There's no need to return to the vehicle to put a ticket on the dashboard, and there's also more secure coin collection. It's proposed that the pay stations will be purchased from Parkion Incorporated by piggybacking on an agreement between the Miami Parking Authority and Parkion Incorporated. Parkion is a leading vendor in the multi-space pay station category, with 50% of the US market and over 60% of the global market. Per Section SC163, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions of the Salisbury City Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the city of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city received a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. The Procurement Division has obtained a copy of the agreement between the Miami Parking Authority and Parkion Incorporated, which was executed in September 2014 and has confirmed the validity of the contract. The total cost for 13 pay stations, including the back office system, is $103,369. There are sufficient funds in the noted account, which is the parking improvement account, to make this purchase. The Procurement Division requests council's approval to award Contract 108-17 to Parkion in the amount of $103,369.
Questions? Just for my clarification, do we, are these the ones we saw at the headquarters?
Yes.
Oh, that's fantastic. Any other questions?
The next item is a request for a declaration of surplus. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare the following handgun surplus. It's a Glock 45 caliber handgun, Model 21, serial WG631. Upon declaration of surplus, and as approved by the council, the aforementioned handgun will be given to retired police officer Lieutenant Everett Howard as a retirement gift.
Questions? We thank Lieutenant for his service.
Last item is also a request for declaration of surplus. The city of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to declare 14 bicycles surplus. All items were found, forfeited, or unclaimed, and attempts to return items to known owners have been unsuccessful. It's the request of the Salisbury Police Department that items are either sold at auction or donated locally. A detailed list of the items is included. The Procurement Division requests council's approval to declare the noted items surplus and to allow the Salisbury Police Department to, excuse me, to dispose of them as requested.
Questions?
Just as a public comment, this is if you buy a bike, you register it with the police department, because they have a system that they can keep track of the serial numbers, and oftentimes quickly return bikes to people who lose them.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Thank you, Mr. Boda. No other questions? In that case, I'll call the vote for the award of bids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. I'll now entertain, oh, before we go for, for, one second. Delegate Carl Anderton is, our delegate has entered the room, so I'd like to recognize him in the back. All right, now I think we're ready. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2688. Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Mark Tillman filling in for Mr. Stevenson this evening. This is 2688 is a resolution of the City of Salisbury providing a payment in lieu of taxes, otherwise known as a pilot, to the development of Gatehouse Market and the lofts located at 401 West Main Street. Whereas the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, recognizes that there is a significant need for quality housing units in Salisbury for persons with low to moderate incomes; and whereas Green Street Housing LLC, or its assany, a Maryland limited liability corporation, proposes to develop and operate a rental housing development comprised of approximately 60 units, known as Gatehouse Market and Lofts located at 401 West Main Street, Salisbury, Maryland, all or a portion of which will assist persons of lower income as required by applicable law or regulations; and whereas Green Street Housing LLC has advised the city that financing from the Maryland Department of Housing Community Development Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program warrants a contribution to the project in the form of a payment in lieu of taxes; and whereas the City of Salisbury supports this project because it will address the need for quality affordable housing for persons with lower incomes; and whereas the City of Salisbury desires to provide for a payment in lieu of taxes, known as a pilot, be it hereby resolved that the City of Salisbury approves a pilot agreement between Green Street Housing LLC, or its assany, and the City of Salisbury attached hereto, provided Green Street Housing LLC constructs and operates a rental housing project on 401 West Main Street for persons with low to moderate income in accordance with the guidelines of the Department and LIHTC Restrictive Use Covenants. The pilot agreement provides for a reduction of the City of Salisbury real estate taxes in the amount of $400 per unit, per year, if the project continues to provide affordable housing for persons of lower income for a period of 40 years from the date the building is granted a certificate of occupancy; and be it further resolved that the mayor granted the authority to execute said payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which is hereby attached to this resolution on behalf of the City of Salisbury.
That's it. Questions?
What, what does low to moderate translate to in numbers?
Let's see, I think that's in the agreement itself here. Households having an income of no more than 60% of the area median income. And I don't know what that is off the top of my head. But whatever the area median income is.
Do we know what percentage is going to be reserved for lower to moderate income people?
Yes.
I'm sure the information's here, I'm just new at this job.
Yeah, no, that's fine. And I just got this job this evening.
We have something in common.
I'm trying to remember what the percentage was. I think they were only, if I remember correctly from looking at this, let me see, let's double check.
I think what I recall, from work session and previous discussions, I think it was like 60 to 75% of the units would be allotted for low to mid, mid-income.
It's higher, it's, yeah, it's closer to 90%.
I was gonna tell you, in the cover letter.
Fifty-four affordable apartments and six market rate.
Correct, that's what I just spotted.
Yeah, 54 affordable and six market rate apartments.
So like 87.
And 80 parking spaces.
Oh, wow. Plus the bottom is gonna be a market.
A marketplace.
Other questions? If not...
Basically, the vast majority are gonna be for the, the moderate.
Hearing no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution 2688, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. I'll now entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2689.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
All right, this resolution deals with the property out at the Naylor Mill, basically the paleo channel where we produce the water. The property out there is being, a conservation easement is being granted to the state of Maryland, pursuant to all the details and terms thereof, which I assume you do not want me to read every one this evening. But I, I will if you, if you would like. But what we have here in the resolution, this resolution follows the state format. We're identifying the property by very specific description that's going, that's gonna be covered. And in addition to that, the city is reserving the right to control the production of water for Salisbury's water supply out there at the paleo channel. So, we will still be able to put in wells, we will be able to put in additional structures and utilities that are necessary in order to do that. And we, to do that, we don't need to seek the permission of the state of Maryland. If there were any other type of structure, if somebody was gonna build something, a hunting lodge or something out there, you know, that would have to be approved by the state. That couldn't be done without that type of permission. And it's, it's just a very detailed agreement. I think there's also some obligations. The city's gonna do a trail plan. There's, there's gonna be a plan with regard to the forested areas. And that's all gonna have to be worked out with the state. But the point is to maintain what's on top as the, you know, conservation and for the use of the public for that purpose, and, and to go out there and hike the trails, and at the same time to protect and preserve the city's water supply as best we can, and to keep the right to utilize that water in the best interest of the city.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 2689, please signify by saying aye.
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 And chair votes aye. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, just going back, 60% of the area median income for a household is $32,590. So that would be the threshold that we would be looking at.
And that's 60% of that income?
That's, that's correct. The, the household income is 54,322.
54?
54 is the median for the Salisbury area.
So it's 60% of that, so 60% of 32,000 is, oh...
It's 32,590.
20, yeah, 20?
Okay.
Sorry, I couldn't find it fast.
That's okay.
So the, wait, just, I'm not sure I understand. The, the 60% is the 30-some-thousand-dollar figure?
The 60% is the median.
Okay. No, the median, he said, but I thought it was 54.
It was.
Okay.
The 60% is 32.
Gotcha, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Rent has to make 30...
Well, the combined household.
Household income.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
It could be husband and wife.
But, but I'm saying, what if it's one person?
It doesn't matter.
32,000?
If they fall below that...
Huh?
If they make below that, they qualify.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Oh, that's what I'm, that's what I'm interested in finding out, you know? I mean, I, I didn't want it to just be 32,000 and above, but that's the cap, that's the most you can make.
For the house.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the most, that's right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2402 for the first reading. Mr. Boda?
Second.
Ms. Jackson?
This is ordinance Number 2402. An ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving amendment of the FY17 budget to appropriate funds for street maintenance. Whereas the City of Salisbury contracted work at the request of Salisbury University to install sidewalk along the north side of Power Street; whereas the City of Salisbury Engineering Division of Public Works Department utilized the citywide concrete contract to perform the sidewalk work; and whereas Salisbury University reimbursed the city for the actual expenses to install the sidewalk; and whereas the Engineering Division budget should be increased to accommodate these efforts, now therefore be ordained by the City Council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that city's fiscal year 2017 budget and Engineering Division street maintenance budget be hereby amended as follows: with an increase in the miscellaneous revenue count 01000-456911, account by $21,752.75, and an increase in the street maintenance account by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2402 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
This evening, we have two requests for audience participation. First, our delegate Carl Anderton Jr., please come to the podium.
Well...
Good evening.
Good evening. Pretty cool evening. Congratulations, gentlemen, on your new positions, and that's awesome. If I may, councilman, offer some advice. I would get involved with the Maryland Municipal League. It's a very good educational tool, you know, hand, that's available to all elected municipal officials across the state. And, you know, 'cause it's kinda jumping in midstream like this, right? You know, it's a very good tool to help you get caught up on, on how municipal government works, and, and, you know, it'd be very beneficial.
What the delegate's not telling you is he was the president of the Maryland Municipal League, and he was the mayor of Delmar. Just for a historical note.
Yes, Mr. Historian, absolutely, right. That is a good point, yes, a very good point. And if they can help me, they can help anybody, so, yeah. You're right. So tonight is a bit of, you know, a lot of changes going on, and I too have some, and I wanted to share that with you all this evening. First, I wanted to introduce someone who's gonna be working, working with us from here on out. Her name's Brittany Finnemore, and she was our staffer last year, and she comes on as our, as our, she was our intern last year, and now she's coming on as, as our staffer, replacing Bunky. And so I'm gonna try to get through this without getting too emotional on this. As you know, Bunky, we do too many things together. You know, as campaign manager knocking on doors, and he was, you know, our legislative aide, ran the office for, for two years. But we knew that that would be temporary, that we were going to spread our wings once we got to the, to Annapolis, and we've done that. And so Bunky has been appointed to, to join Governor Hogan's administration. And I'll let him fill you in on that. But I wanted to just take a quick second and introduce you guys to Brittany, because she will be the new Bunky.
She has better hair.
She has much better hair than Bunky, yes, you're absolutely right. So, but, but she's very smart, and so, and very organized. And for me, that means everything. So, you know, it's, it's gonna be an exciting time going forward, but I, I'll step aside and let Bunky tell you about his new role.
Welcome, Brittany.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if you've been around for a while, basically the new job would be what Chuck Cook did under Governor O'Malley, which is the Intergovernmental Affairs Eastern Shore representative. And I'll be starting that role November 1st. I'll be working with city and county governments, all nine counties and 50-plus municipalities at Eastern Shore, you know, with, you know, on the governor's staff. So, you won't, you'll be seeing me a lot. So, if you have any requests or anything like that, I'm here for you.
Don't just look at him.
Typing you an email now. We have requests.
Date of November 1st.
I know, I know this was very difficult for Carl, because they've been, it's like the left and right hand.
Yes.
But your loss is our gain.
That's true.
And I'm, I'm very happy, and for, I'm happy for both of you, so. Thank you very much. We have another request to speak. Mary Ashanti, representing the, you know, you're not gonna? Come on, you can say something. Come on.
Please.
Come on up. You must have wanted to say something.
It's not 7 o'clock, Mary, you've got 15 minutes, you got it.
But the county did the same thing. I'm sitting there being quiet. And you all should appreciate that. I'm Mary Ashanti, President, Waukesha County NAACP. And it's a pleasure being here. It's a pleasure seeing history being made. And just keep on doing what you're doing. And thank you for your service, all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Day and I, in a fit of historical, no less proud Billy Jean Jackson would be, but Rachel Polk and former council president LaVon Zella Sigurs, back when we were in two districts, served at the same time. Yes, they did. Nonetheless, the first African-American male, which our city is in desperate need of representation. And, and let me just say, you have a, a big district. It wraps all the way around the outside of the city, from the north side to the south side, along the east side. And we're looking forward to working with you every day.
I'm excited at the prospects.
If you figure that your district out, would you help me, let me know where it is? Because...
You all asked what I want my first project to be, and as I was driving home, I was thinking to make the City of Salisbury symmetrical.
Oh, forget it. You're gonna, okay, you're gonna need to, you're gonna need to be here for a few years.
I'm not saying I would do it, but it would have been a good answer.
All right. There's no, nothing else tonight. We are adjourned, thank you.